Manager's report, and then we have a public hearing item, and it's the fiscal year 2017-18 property tax level levy. And David, would I ask for you to just give us a little what it was last year, what it is this year, and then we'd open up to the public. So why don't you tell us the great changes in the property tax levy?
Mayor, members of council. State law requires a public hearing on the budget, on the property tax levy before you vote on the final property tax. There's actually no action to be taken at this. For this event, all you do is open up the public. If anyone wants to talk about it, present to it, they can. When it's done, you close it and then can go on to vote on the final budget. The actual property tax levy is going to be voted on in your first meeting in August. The levy is remaining the same at .1136 per hundred of assessed value, which in layman's terms, for $100,000, $100,000 house, you're paying $11.36 of city property tax. All the other property taxes you see on your bill goes to the school district, the county, the fire equalization tax, and many other things. But the actual city's tax of the bill is just over $11 per hundred of assessed valuation.
What I'm concerned about is the assessment stays the same, and we need to share with the people from your, from your, what, you know.
As far as the budget purpose goes.
No, what we need to know is how much money is generated by that, the total cap, which is 400 and whatever it is this year, last year, it was up or down?
This year, it is down from last year because in aggregate, the property tax values have gone down. So you were talking about 100 and about $350,000 of property tax levy is what the city is receiving.
Okay. It is down, down how much from last year?
It is down about less than $20,000.
$20,000.
So, and it, and the property tax confusing, the state legislature did try to make some amendments, this property tax is actually for the value of your house in 2016.
Got it.
So there's, which is why when tax, property values were going down, the assessments were still going up. And if property taxes start to go up, the assessment will still go down for an extra year.
There's a lag on the assessment period.
There's a lag on the assessment.
Okay. Any questions for David on this issue?
Just a quick one. If, and this is if I remember correctly, and please correct me if I'm wrong. If we were, I know we're not maxing out the property tax for the city, but if we were, we would be talking about something around like $100,000, something very small.
It's about, I'm gonna say 180,000, I think, off the top of my head. And it would take it basically, I wanna say four or five dollars per hundred of assessed value, per, four dollars increase for a $100,000 house.
Not that I'm in any way arguing for that. I just wanted to ask the question.
No, that's a, that's a good point, because when I've had conversations with Chuck and David on our one-on-one sessions, it's always, well, it's gonna take, before we have an impact on the budget, in the budget revenue, we're gonna have to do this four or five years in a row to have a real impact on generating revenue. So that's what makes it not very attractive.
What other, what other governmental organizations do we know of that are intending of increasing property taxes right now, that are gonna impact Sierra Vista?
The ones that I know of that are increasing property taxes, there's been discussions, the county is looking at increasing the property tax. The school bond did go into effect, so there will be a new secondary property tax for the school bonds. Offhand.
Cochise College.
Cochise College is, is looking at an increase, so.
With the, do we have an idea of what the impact from those will be on to the people who live in Sierra Vista?
No, sir, I do not know what their, their request and their increase. I don't know that any of them would be materially significant, I guess. Obviously, any dollar to a citizen is a dollar to a citizen. But when you're talking like us, when it's, what dollar is, would be like, if there were to increase at a dollar, that would be $100 on a $100,000 house, so.
And the other thing, too, is I think isn't the county the one that ultimately okay's everything in?
Well, they do, and they make the collections. But property tax is a little bit funny, because right now, we're in a period of declining assessed valuations. So your assessed valuation of your property will go down. If there was a rate increase, it might very well equalize your bill, or, or maybe raise it just a very small amount. So I don't see the increases by the other entities having a large impact on anybody's property tax bill.
All right, thank you.
Good questions. Thanks, David. Anything else on item two? All right, well, now, move to new business, and the meeting minutes for July 13th. Any additions, deletions, corrections for those minutes for July 13th? Okay, not seeing any. We'll go on to item number five again, Mr. Felix.
Mayor, members of council, this is the adoption of the final budget for fiscal year 18. There's been no changes at all from the tentative budget. So the cap has been set. Any change that would come in would be coming in under the cap, and we can adopt it during the year as it goes. As we discussed at the one-work session, there'll be a follow-up about your strategic planning time with an updated mid-year financial report, so.
Questions or discussion?
Are we on item four or five?
Should be item four.
We were talking about four, but.
Which is approving the sales tax execution delivery and pledge revenue refinancing obligations to repay. This is, this is the bond one.
Oh, the bond, okay.
You're on five, I'm on four.
I'm on five, okay.
Sorry, sorry, bub.
I was originally told it was in the opposite order. I don't have the agenda in front of me.
Well, unless, unless I got the wrong paperwork here.
Nope. Actually, we have the good news, okay, I know, I know you guys are gonna be shocked to hear this from me, but even more good news. The actual closing rate when we closed the documents was 1.84%. So we get an extra $10,000, $20,000 of net present value savings, because the interest rate actually had gone down the next day by the time we locked in the rate. And we do have, we did have about 1.75 million of cash in the trust account for the January bond payment. So instead of just holding it aside, what the B of A compass has agreed to do is lower the bond issuance size to reflect that, and not just have us have to put it out in a trust account and match a payment. So the actual bond issuance will be 17.15 million, and it's gonna be a total of a 500. It's on your side, as you can see on page four, the net present value savings is now The actual payments in the next four years will remain about the same. No material change in the size of the principal and interest payments. The series 20, the ones, bonds we're gonna pay off in 2023 will have a final payment in 2022. And the sewer plant bonds will pay off in 2026 instead of 2027. So it equals about a 3.1% savings over the current bonds that are outstanding. So this has actually worked really well, and I just got these documents within the last hour. So the documents we sent out to you for approval on Thursday will change when they update all the numbers in those documents to reflect this last-minute update from our trustee sending that information over, and the downsides of the bond issue.
Okay, questions?
Just a comment, good job on this. This is good work. Thank you.
Anything else? Now, do we need to go back to the budget? Final budget approval? Item five?
Are we, are we formalizing the one request that I had, as far as the, the change in the fiscal policy?
Well, we'll actually update Councilmember Mount, the, your financial policy. So while we're doing that, we may wanna look at a few other things that may need to be changed, so there'll be an overall change in the council's financial policy document that was approved back in '08, now, I think it was the year. So that'll be the formal place where you do that. We're already planning on having the mid-year budget review. It'll probably be in the February timeframe, once we get the January numbers for the half year.
So we should see that resolution in the next couple of months, I'm guessing.
Okay, thank you.
Ma'am?
Where did we, when we talked about the wave machine, where did we end up actually putting the savings for that?
That went, the money for that went to the building security project.
Anything else? David, you got off easy on that one. We go to item number six, and that's the intergovernmental agreement with the County Tourism Steering Committee. And Mary, you gonna do this one?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, member council. The city has been a partner with all of the other communities and the county, except for Wachukah City, who has not participated in this program, to do joint tourism attraction for a number of years, almost 20 years. Over the past year, some changes were made in the way in which the communities were working together, and a new strategy was developed, and it was determined, recommended by the group, that the city become the fiscal agent and tap into the resources within the city's own marketing and public affairs division, which would save the collaborative money by having access to graphic artists in-house, people who can write press releases, and a variety of things that they were paying for through a, an external consultant. So after some conversation, the IGA was updated. The city will, will now serve as the fiscal agent for this entity, which means that we'll keep track of all expenses and will provide the staff support to the, the body that will be developing the, the strategy, and then implement that based on this collaborative's decisions in terms of how to move forward, and be able to do it in a more efficient way. The cost to the city is the same as it has been for the last 20 years, $20,000. And that money has always been budgeted in the marketing and public affairs division, will continue to be budgeted, and then all of the rest of the expenditures are also being added to, and were included in this year's budgets, all of them combined together. Part of that money is being used to offset staff costs, so, and that money, again, was also incorporated into the budget. And then the city will be hiring, once all of the approvals have been made of these IGAs, a part-time person who will be dedicated specifically to the regional tourism effort. And that person will be doing the primary coordination, will also be going out to the different entities to make sure that the city is aware of all of the resources and all of the attractions that need to be included. Will be managing the website, doing the social media, and a variety of other things. So that person is anticipated to be a 19 and a half hour a week employee. And with that, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, ladies and gentlemen?
Yes, sir. I have questions. One, Judy's proven me wrong more than enough times this year, so I think she can handle the workload. The questions that I do have are, what, what other governmental organizations are we taking responsibility from that ultimately will have as customers, for lack of a better term? Who are they?
The customers? The Cochise County Tourism Commission consists of Bisbee, Douglas, Wilcox, Benson, Tombstone, Cochise County, and the city of Sierra Vista.
And they're subsidizing all the costs for this effort, and it's staying net neutral for us?
Correct.
The money coming in will pay, pay the overhead costs, then.
All right. And then, I guess, will we, as we start to align these objectives, are we gonna get some ideas of, I don't really think council will have too much of a play in this, but will we get an example of how these, I'm just curious, of how these processes are aligned so that we can see, basically, what's the effect? Like, what are we trying to get by synchronizing the efforts, is what I'm curious about?
Right. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Mount, one of the things that has been raised by this group is the need to be able to measure the impact of the regional tourism. And, and so they're starting to look at, how can that be measured? What's the data that's being collected by the Arizona Office of Tourism that can be used? And, and in fact, what I'll tell you is that over the past several years of, as new faces from these different entities have come on board, it's those new perspectives that have changed the way in which the, the marketing was done, to a more strategic targeted effort. And so there will be not just measurements in terms of hits on the website and the number of things that are being mailed out, because that will also be a part of the city's responsibility as the fiscal agent to coordinate all of that. But also, what are the impacts on our, on all of the different revenues that are coming in, the hotel, motel revenue, and that sort of thing? And I know it is the intent of the CCTC to provide some reports, and we'll be sure to make those available to the council.
This is my last question. Is there any fiscal risk or liability to the city if, for some reason, we can't deliver to the other organizations what we say we're gonna deliver?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Mount, no, because this is a, even if at the end of one year it weren't to move forward, we could, we could let go of the part-time employee, and then the city would be responsible for 100% of the salaries of our employees, which up until this year, we've been paying for.
Okay. All right, I appreciate that. Good luck.
Yeah, I, I think, too, it's important to note in the past, the CCTC, the monies would be pooled, there is a board of the city managers that oversees how the, the money is spent. But in years past, we were heavily reliant on contractors for doing a lot of the marketing and that kind of thing. And while there's still maybe some contracting going on, we're able to add the talents of our, of our staff to this, to hopefully be more effective.
Any other questions, discussion? Yes, ma'am?
My one question was about a report from the CTC, CTC, that group?
Yes.
On a fairly regular basis, and you answered that, I believe, that they would, we would get reports.
And also, since I'm on the board, you know, I can add that to, I can add that to your executive report as well, so.
Okay. And while we're on this, I just wanna congratulate Judy and her team for getting 120,000 in-kind support from the state. We can't seem to do that on other areas, but glad we were able to do that in tourism. So congratulations, and we look forward to some great things from you guys. That concludes the, the meeting schedule for the 27th, so we'll now go to item number two, which should be the executive report.
Mr. Mayor.
We still have a couple.
Did I miss one? Did I miss one? My page is stuck together?
I know.
I've got another.
I've got seven, eight, nine, and 10.
There's another five or six more things there.
Well, yeah, my page is stuck together, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'll blame the humidity. No, actually, I'm missing a page.
We have item eight. Are we on eight or seven?
Item seven.
Seven.
I'm missing a page. Let me back, let me back up and use the short, the short list here. Okay, now we'll get back on track. We had the tourism, item number seven should be intergovernmental agreement with the Cochise County Board of Supervisors for the 911. Mary?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, you heard a very detailed presentation last Monday. As you know, this process has been going, has been under discussion for a number of years. We are finally at the point where there is a, an IGA ready for your approval, and it is on the Board of Supervisors' agenda for approval, I believe today, they should have approved it today. So assuming that this pass on Thursday, the JPA Board will meet the first week of September as their initial meeting to approve the bylaws and begin the recruitment process for an executive director, so that this can continue to move forward under this new governmental entity. And city manager and I will be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions on the regional communications?
Just one, please remind us again of who the board members will be.
Certainly. Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Calhoun, the board is to consist of all of the municipal partners, and will be represented by their chief administrative officer. And the sheriff, as the chair of the operations committee, will be an ex officio member of the board.
And the fire districts, there'll have to be three districts for one, one board member to represent the fire district.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I did forget that. Yes, the fire districts will have one board member to represent all of the districts in Cochise County, but they will need at least three participants before they can, before they select their own board member.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Anything else? Okay, thank you. And now, we go on to resolution eight, which is the intergovernmental agreement with the city of Douglas for their intercity bus service.
Sharon's gonna do that.
Sharon's gonna do this one, okay.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, based on the results of a feasibility study initiated by the Southeastern Arizona Government Organization, or CIGO, a new intercity transit service will begin operation next month. The service is called Cochise Connection. It will connect Douglas, Bisbee, Sierra Vista, and Benson. The Cochise Connection will be managed and operated by the city of Douglas, and will provide service between the community six days per week. The stops in Sierra Vista include the Transit Center, Cochise College, and the Canyon Vista Medical Center. Funding is primarily through the Legacy Foundation. The contribution from the city of Sierra Vista is limited to in-kind and billable services only. Through this IGA, the city will sell monthly passes for the Cochise Connection at the Transit Center and remit payment to the city of Douglas. The Cochise Connection will also utilize existing city bus stops at the aforementioned locations, and fleet repairs may be provided on a billable basis as needed, depending on other priorities of city fleet staff as well. The IGA is renewable on an annual basis, should any conditions arise that would warrant reexamination of the agreement. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from Ms. Lasar? Yes?
You mentioned Benson? I didn't see that in the document.
Yeah, I forgot to include it in the memo. It does go up to Ben, to Benson. On the weekdays, the service to and from Sierra Vista is three times a day. It only goes to Benson twice, basically, the first drought in the morning and the last one in the afternoon goes to Benson. The middle route at lunchtime only goes as far as Sierra Vista.
And I guess Douglas is advertising this? The word, is the word out yet? I haven't seen a lot about it.
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Calhoun, my understanding is the website just went live here recently. I did do a search for it before I came here. I wasn't able to find it, but I was on a limited timeframe. My understanding is the word is getting out. Lot of people are excited to, to use it, see what ridership looks like when the service actually gets going.
And ticket sales at our transit center and other places.
Yeah, we expect that the ticket volume at our transit center is going to be relatively low, because the majority of the people are coming from the opposite direction into Sierra Vista or up to Benson. The need for people to go the other direction from Sierra Vista to Bisbee or to Douglas, I think, is probably less.
Okay, thank you.
So assuming this gets passed, do we know when we will start selling tickets?
Service is scheduled to begin on August 7th. When we actually start selling tickets, you know, depends on when.
Hopefully, yeah, hopefully before August 7th.
What's the, what's the cost? So if I wanted to go from, say, I wanted to go to Cochise College, and I was gonna go from there to Bisbee on a Saturday.
Okay, from, let's see. Saturday, based on the information I have here, Saturday versus weekday, routes are the same price. The price varies depending on how far you're going. Douglas to Sierra Vista is $4, Douglas to Bisbee is $3, Bisbee to Sierra Vista $3, Sierra Vista to Benson $3, Douglas all the way up to Benson is $7, and Bisbee to Benson is $6. So $3 to $7, depending on the distance.
Want both ways?
Yeah.
All right. And this, for the city, is essentially, there's nothing to us, it's all being paid for by Legacy Foundation and.
Correct. Our contribution is in-kind only, basically using existing staff at the Transit Center to sell Cochise Connection tickets and remit payment to the city of Douglas. And fleet services would be billed at our billable rates that we bill all our IGA customers.
All right. Let's see.
Do you have, oh, excuse me.
It'll be a good experiment, but again, it's subsidized, it's for, the $4, $3 doesn't cover the cost, the Legacy Foundation is picking up the rest of it.
Will we be able, will we get reports, or, you know, can we get updates on how it's going? Will we get the city of Douglas to kinda let us know what's happening, and?
I'm sure they can.
Yeah, they will, they will.
Curious to see how.
And also, CIGO is involved, was involved in the planning, and this is a program that originally is supposed to run for at least three years to see if it's, if it's viable.
It's really nice.
I'll go up to Bisbee on a weekend and check it out. I'll let you know how it works out.
Okay.
Just the side issue administratively is the use of our facilities, and that's why insurance is required as well, which Douglas has, so that's not a problem.
Any other discussion? All right, thank you very much. Thanks for your great report. We now go to the, item number nine, is an appointment, two appointments to the Industrial Development Authority. Any questions, discussion?
I, I just have to bring up again, we, I know we have no authority over IDA. We never know what they're doing. Is there any?
Are you gonna attend the meeting?
Well, that would be one way.
No, I was just gonna say, they haven't been meeting, because they've only had like two members, and they haven't had anything going on, so I know that they have some meetings coming up, that they'll be.
We have a council liaison, are you a liaison to that? It would just be interesting to get a report from them. You disagree?
No, I don't disagree, you could always request one. But again, there's separate, separate state agency where we basically appoint them, and that's.
We appoint the members, okay.
That's about all we do by state law, which is odd, it's an odd duck, no doubt.
Yeah, it is. Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And then, item, the last item is the appointment to two members to the youth commission. Okay, anything, anything on that item? No, I think we're not. All right, we'll go on to the executive council report, and Mr. Puduchik, you wanna, you wanna start, and then we'll, we'll pepper you?
Okay, well, obviously, on my report, when this, when we put this together, talked mostly about, you know, the trip to DC that we took, you know, and who, who we saw, you know, there, and the activities of the CCRN with the Horseshoe Draw project, and then also the OEA grant that is currently underway as well. So clearly, you know, we've talked a lot about some of the other things we've been working on with the intergovernmental agreements and that kind of thing, but those are the highlights for last month.
Okay, I just wanna, I just wanna mention that our consultant, Mr. Niemeyer, was approved in the Senate Committee for under-Secretary of Defense job. Technically, he can still be our, our advisor until he's actually appointed and the appointment goes through with the full Senate. So right now, we and the 50 in the county are talking to some other folks to see about replacements on how we proceed in the future without Mr. Niemeyer. So that's, that's in the works.
Yeah, and that's a big loss to us, because he did a wonderful job as consultant, but it is a gain for us in terms of the job that he received in DC. So the other thing that wasn't in here at the time was, you know, our, our hiring of Tony Boone as the Economic Development Manager. That occurred recently, and he'll be starting on Monday, so we look forward to that as well.
Okay, any, any questions or discussion for the city manager on the executive report?
What were the feelings when you did the party on July 1st for the annexation? Did you get an overall feeling how the community was looking at that?
It was a very small sample of the residents in Frytown. It was a community event, so there were a lot of families there to enjoy the festivities, and we did meet with, you know, a handful of Frytown property owners, and there are some reservations, you know, by the long-term residents, but we don't think that's necessarily representative of the entire neighborhood. So we have to continue our outreach, and the kickoff really starts with the resolution that will be scheduling for your consideration at your next meeting. And from there, we will be working through representatives of the neighborhood to solicit interest and, and signatures on the annexation process.
Where do you feel most of the reservations are coming from?
I think there are some that wanna maintain the status quo, and don't wanna see changes, positive or negative, they just want things to remain the same. And, you know, there will be a change in services, you know, if it is ultimately annexed to the city. They'll be seeing our police department, they'll be seeing our code enforcement officers, they'll be seeing the potential for new infrastructure projects. So.
Well, if, I think, too, there's, there's a lot of tradition in Fry, so that's probably the main one, you know, that we have to overcome, and we've been chipping away at that over, over a number of years. As Matt mentioned, there would be a lot more services provided to include police and code enforcement. As Matt mentioned, there would be a lot more services provided to include police and code enforcement. There are obviously a lot of problem properties in Fry owned by out-of-town owners and others that may not be that interested in our police services or our code enforcement services. And also there are some, some of Adam's customers live there as well, so.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I just want to make a note and it's, it's all, it's all positive stuff here. You know, seeing the, the revenues coming in and actually seeing those exceed budget, that's a very, very good sign. Hopefully, we can sustain that for, for a period of time, and I think we can. And also, I know, you know, Matt, I've probably been in and out of your office probably more than you like the last couple months or so. But, but just a note, the amount of permits and inspections and things that you guys are pulling through is, is impressive. And it is notable, and I think there is a correlation when we see the revenues going up and we see those types of permitting processes and everything else going, that those things do correlate. I strongly believe that. So I just looking forward to having the new Economic Development Director onboard and hearing what him and Mike have cooked up and the direction that we're going to go there so we can continue to sustain that. But this is a good report. I posted it online and the public really liked it as well. There was nothing negative about it. They were very, very positive about this. So it's just a good job to your staff, Chuck.
Well, another thing that occurred was the fire over in the Kings Manor area, as you're aware. And that was a problem property that we'd been working with for a number of years. The unfortunate part about that is we'll probably end up having to go ahead and abate that. And we have a quote for that. But the bad part is it'll take about, you know, two-thirds of our abatement budget this year to clean that up. And obviously, we'll move to put a lien on that, but that will kind of render that property valueless at that point. So that's going to be a while before I think we see something.
Since you bring that up and because it was such a, obviously very publicized, the, are we going to get anything resembling a formal report of kind of what happened that we can have some facts to go back to the public and say, here's the investigation, here's what occurred?
That's a good question, Chief. I don't know where Paul is on the investigation. Could you maybe provide an update?
I talked to him last week and he said he's got some stuff at a lab, you know, he took samples. And so he's got to get the results from those back. He said honestly, with the amount of stuff that was in there, it may come back undetermined on the cause. He said it was really, really, and it cooked in there for a long time, which of course builds up, destroys a lot of evidence as far as where the fire started. So the longer something cooks inside a building like that and it just burns and burns and burns. It burns up all the, the evidence of, you know, origin and cause. So, but he's got some, he's got some stuff at a lab, so that, that shows that he's, he's looking at, you know, potential causes.
Well, we're not there yet.
Right. Bottom line, we're not there.
Understood. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
And I might have missed this. I was reading this report in the car on the way back from a trip last night. So on the building permits, I saw year-to-date, but do we have the year-over-year numbers?
I can generate those and include them in the next report. Sure.
That would be great. Thank you.
Probably should do, that's a good question. We probably should do something similar to what we're doing with sales tax. So you can kind of get the year-over-year comparison.
I would like to see that.
But I think we are seeing more activity and including some business activity, so we're very pleased.
I agree. And that's enough, just to have those for comparison because I feel like we're seeing more activity, but like fact to back that up. The other, only two things I had is the story about Judy Post was fabulous. And just to see that things other than traditional type medicine can work, you know, physical activity and things. That was really nice to read that story. I'd like to actually, if you would mind, see that kind of go out even more and share it. And then I heard that also the slide at Veterans Park, has that happened since that report was taken out or what happened there?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Gray, yes, we decided to remove the slide as well.
Any, just because of heat or?
It was out of compliance and as an uncovered slide, we just, we knew that, you know, the, the rating for it on the inspection report was that, address it if you can, but as time and money permits. So we decided that we're not going to spend the money to put up a shade cover over it, so it was time to come out.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Yeah, I'm going to miss going down that slide too. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Petuchek. We'll now move on to the next item on the agenda, if I can find my agenda here. There we go. Report on recent trips, meetings, and future meetings.
Just a brief comment on the meet and greet. We were at Landmark Cafe between 7:00 and 9:00 AM last Thursday. One thing we did note is that between 7:00 and 8:00, it's primarily military. And they were friendly but didn't have any discussion with the council. Many of them, however, did like to receive those Sierra Vista decals that we got from our PAO office. And where they were, some were put on every table and folks took them and were happy to receive them. Also, we had people come by to pick up the bicycle routes and a couple of people picked up transit guides. And I put a list of comments from people, various issues that they would like the city to look at or just comments that they were making. Those will be in the reading room. I don't have it with me, but there was nothing tremendously outstanding. Folks were looking forward to the work being completed on the library. They don't like having to go out and come back in for personal needs. And other than that, yeah, nobody does. So other than that, I don't think there was anything terribly outstanding from the comments that were made. There might be one or two things that various staff members will look at. It'll get shut out to the different departments. That's about it.
Anything else on meetings, future meetings?
I just had a quick comment. The Arizona Commission on African-American Affairs Town Hall last week went quite well. I would say one of the best things about it was getting a bunch of people in the room who are working on different social issues within the community, whether it's education or in the nonprofit world, were able to connect and people who hadn't met before. So it was really valuable all in all. And they are going to take that information back to Governor Ducey in the legislature. So thank you to Jill. Is she here? No. Thank you to Jill for staying late to keep the building open for us. We really appreciated it.
And we do appreciate when statewide commissions actually come down to the greater part of Arizona to hold, conduct their meetings. So I was very pleased to be able to greet them and thank them for coming down on behalf of the community.
The greatest part of Arizona.
They left the great state of America, but they, they thought it was funny when I said that.
Mr. Petuchek?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I and a few members of my staff attended the ACMA Summer Conference latter part of last week. There were a number of sessions relating to the state's economy, ranging through homelessness and other topics of interest. But a primary concern that I wanted to share with you, Mr. Strobeck came from the League to give the legislative update and went over the elections bill, which we thought would be very restrictive to us in terms of council's ability to adjust tax rates. He, in his presentation, mentioned that the bill was really more designed to, at the legislature's efforts to curb charter cities. I asked him specifically about how it related to general law cities like Sierra Vista. And he said, based on the language right now, that they feel that you still maintain your ability to make those adjustments.
When can we, when can we confirm that language, I guess is the real question?
Well, I can ask them for, for, you know, legal opinion.
Yeah, well, that's really the only time you can confirm it is when somebody takes it to court.
Actually, they're, the Pine Top Lakeside is in the process of implementing a tax increase right now. So we'll have firsthand knowledge of what happens.
Anything else? Next is Board and Commission Liaison Updates. Okay, go for it.
Did I miss it or isn't somebody from the League coming to Benson to do a presentation?
Yes.
Friday.
Friday.
This coming Friday. Okay. Do you have the time? I'll go back and check.
We'll get that.
Yeah, we'll get that.
Thank you.
I want to say it's 10, but we'll, we'll send out another reminder. Thank you.
Okay. Board and Commission Updates?
We had, the Cultural Diversity Commission was last night, but it was canceled. So nothing to report there.
I just had one. It's kind of early, but it looks like the mural on the Century Link Building is going to have a dedication on September 16th from 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM. At least that's what I have right now. So the Arts and Humanities Commission is looking forward to that.
Okay. What date?
September 16th from 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM.
I did. Thank you.
Okay, anything else on liaison updates?
I think, Victoria, you've been working with West End to collaborate with Arts and Humanities and one other commission to work on some projects together. Maybe it was on that project, the mural. Does that mean?
You might be thinking of the Parks and Art Commission and the West End Commission collaborating on a public process to update the Small Parks Master Plan for Timothy Lane Park.
Oh, okay, that might have been. And I just saw a brief comment about that. Okay, that's good. I just think it's great when the, when the commissions work together on the different projects. Also, Jill is not here. We were going to come out with a document to, well, that's a different topic. Never mind.
Okay. We'll go down to future discussion, yes?
Just an update. The meeting in Benson is at 10:30 at Benson City Hall, Friday.
Okay.
I'm sending the email.
Future discussion items, council requests?
I've got three.
Okay.
Now that the budget's kind of, I hope locked up and we're going to go forward with that. Some things that I'd like to see the council start to address. I know that we have the new Economic Development Director coming in. I'm not sure what the lead time will be on that, but to get a, just back in the groove of getting some sort of a presentation on that investment. You know, what is the plan of action? What are we doing? I know they have some good ideas. I was in talking to Mike yesterday for quite a bit. And they got great things, but ultimately for us to go out to the public and explain this is what's going on, I think is valuable. Allows us to get buy-in. The other one is transit. Now that transit, now that this budget's done, is to start to take a good look at what can we do as alternatives. Something, some sort of efficiencies there and start to kind of shape that out for, for next year. And then the last one is, we had our strategic planning session, you know, back in January, give or take, right? And this budget being passed, we know we're on the clock for the next two years to try to see if any of that's going to get realized is March. Yeah, so, but we're essentially on the clock. We have two years to figure out how to do some of those things. And I'd like to have some sort of a, I don't know if it's quarterly, biannually, some sort of an update on where those things are at and what can we do as council or what can we expect to see some of those things and essentially.
Of course, we already provide a written report every six months.
One of the things, one of the things we had early on, I'm not sure whether we got away from this or not, I'm trying to remember. But once the council did their portion of the strategic, strategic plan, it went back to staff and then the particular staff heads. And we had a cascade as what they were, what they were, what they were actually working on for the first six months or so. And I know the first year, first time we went through this, we saw that. I'm not sure we saw that on the other two years specifically, but I think that would help give us an understanding of where the staff is on working through, working through the issues.
Provide you the implementation plan and who the assigned project leaders are.
Yeah, so we need, we need to see that if we haven't got that already. And that would help. Doesn't, doesn't answer all your questions, but it gets us down the road.
No, but, but I know that they're working on it. I guess the only thing that we can really solve or contribute to is obviously next year's budget cycle is, do you have the funding to implement and get these things done? And if, if something's fallen off, then council can say, no, that's a priority. Let's reprioritize. We'll find some way to get that moved. This isn't a priority. Just that constant kind of flow-through to make sure that the policy that we're setting up is, is there. And more importantly, you guys have a clear priority of what, what's there. Just, just so at the end of it, at two years, we don't come back and say, what is all this? That's all.
Yes, ma'am.
Along those same lines, I think we had mentioned before that if the staff saw areas within their assignments where the commissions could be useful in doing a task, we would like to hear that. Otherwise, as we get that implementation report, we can see where we feel like the commissions could be helpful. If that doesn't work out, I think we need to relook what the commissions are doing. And I'll go on and bring it up at this time. We were going to give the commissions a, kind of a briefing on the results of our meeting that we, or the meetings that the committee had. And I don't think we've done that yet. And we need to follow up with that and give them, although many of us have probably already spoken about what we know, we don't have the document to say what exactly decisions that we made during those committee meetings.
So which, which committee are you talking about? Are you talking about the committee of three?
Yes.
Okay. Basically, the committee of three met to, to help the council as a whole decide the issues. And I'm not sure the committee of three has any authority to really go back to each of the, each of the commissions and say, this is the way it's going to be. And now if, if individual council members want to have a member of the committee of three or members of the committee of three come to a, to a meeting with the, with the commissions and explain what was discussed, I don't, I don't have a problem with that. But again, I think we're backtracking.
But we were going to present a document to the council to agree about what we had decided that the commissions would do.
I thought we'd already voted on all that.
We did. The, the, the long, but you're, you're right. There's, there's an execution piece that we haven't really done yet. So maybe one of the things, ultimately, at the end of the day, that count, that commission improvement plan was only centered around, we would find a task and we would say, we want this commission to look at it. And then they would come back to us and say, here's, here's what we found out.
And the other way around too. We also talked about, they could bring possible tasks to us.
Absolutely. But the, the, but the real, I guess the reality is, is us as a council, have we identified anything right now that we want a commission to go in and engage and take a look at?
No, we haven't.
We got what's on the strategic plan, so any of that could potentially be there. And then I threw out transit. I would love to actually have that, just have a real dialogue that, you know, talks about the solutions there.
So those decisions will be made as a council? That's the, the piece that's kind of missing here.
Yeah, we, we do need to make it as a council when we decide, if a council person sees an issue that they think it fits their commission or another commission, they should bring it up. We need to discuss it. And if we agree that we need to charge them with a specific thing, right and left limits, timeframe and all the other thing, other than what's already in their authorization, because they are authorized to do, do things already by their, by their.
Resolutions. Well, you know me and I like it in writing. And I, I think that's just not clear. It may not be clear to, it may be clear to the current commission, but does that follow through? You know, we, we just, I think we need to document that, whether it's a resolution or just kind of an action item or something. I don't know what you want to call it, but I just think we need it clarified. This is what we're going to do and how we're going to do it. This is what the commissions can do and going to do it as far as taskings are concerned. Does that fit anything that we currently?
We have some of that.
Well, I know that there was a, there was an article, there was, there was an article that was put out recently where they said they wanted the, I think it was an editorial, said they wanted the CAC to look at something. We just banned the CAC. But, but it doesn't matter. The concept's still there. So if there's a, again, I'll come back to transit because it's kind of on my mind. If we say, what are the? If we say, what are the commissions that we want to take a look at transit that would fall under their purview, right? I don't know if, I don't know if Parks and Rec would, would want to do that, I don't know if the library would want to do that, but maybe Cultural Diversity, maybe the West End, maybe, you know, if we had that Economic Development Commission, that'd be nice. But if we had, if we had those things, then what we do is just make the recommendation, say, hey, I really want this commission to go take a look at it and we'll throw it over to the commission. If the commission wants to take it on, great. If not, oh well. Last commission that didn't listen to us got disbanded. Okay, I'm joking, I'm joking.
Mr. Mayor, we'll go ahead, your first work session on, in September, we'll go ahead and put this topic on there and then we'll try to provide nearly the information that we already have and you can discuss it further.
One of the components too, Chuck, is, is when we, when we had the briefings from the commissions last time was coming up with a minimum standard for what's in it, what's in a commission briefing. And I think we had a very good one from Parks and Rec Commission that would serve as an example for the rest of them. So that, I think that needs to be part of that same discussion.
Okay, absolutely.
Okay, the other, the other thing I'll mention on, on council requests, a number of times, a number of months ago, I asked, asked for this and I knew that we weren't going to get to it right away and that is, we had a member of the, of the public that wanted to come up and discuss voting procedures and, and made a recommendation. And that's, I've done a little work on it, staff's done a little work on it, so at some point in the next couple of months, we'll probably bring that up for discussion to see if we want to streamline our, our, our own local city elections.
That's also on that same agenda.
Is that the same agenda? Okay. So, anything else? All righty, seeing nothing else, we'll see everybody on Thursday. Please adjourn.